Okay, we have our minutes to approve from the public hearing on May the 24th. There was packets out front for anyone that wanted to get a packet. We had about fifteen copies out there. We do have one correction of the minutes under attendees. Economic and Community Director where it says David Wardlaw, that's actually Robert Wardlaw. So we've got that one correction. Was there any other corrections that anyone needs to bring to our attention? Hearing that, I'll sign those into our record. Okay, then we also have our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting on the 24th. Same thing there, we have the one correction of David Wardlaw should be Robert Wardlaw. Does anyone else have any other corrections on this? Hearing that, we'll sign those into the record. Okay, then we have a resolution R-01518, reappointment of Ms. Doris White to the Rossville Public Library Board, or a term that will begin on July the first, 2018, and expire on June the 30th, 2021. And also, there is a resolution number two there, that's RS-16-18, for the reappointment of Ms. Joyce Harrison to the Chickamauga Public Library, for the term of July 1, 2018 through June 30th of 2021. I'll just read one of these, they're both identical with the exception of inserting the name, whether it be Doris White or Joyce Harrison. Resolution R-15-18, a resolution of the Sub Commissioner of Walker County to appoint a member of the Rossville Public Library Board, whereas OCGA 20-5-14A provides that the County Board of Trustees shall consist of at least one appointed from each governmental agency financially supporting the library on a regular basis, and whereas OCGA 20-5-42B provides that the Regional Board of Library Trustees shall be, shall consist of trustees serving on member county boards who are appointed to the Regional Board by each county board for a term specified in writing pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the library system, whereas the Sub Commissioner of Walker County has the authority to appoint a member of the Rossville Library Board, and whereas the Sub Commissioner of Walker County recognizes the qualifications and commitment to public service of Ms. Doris White via her prior service to the Rossville Library Board, therefore it be resolved by the Sub Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, Ms. Doris White is hereby reappointed to the Rossville Public Library Board, so resolved and adopted the fourteenth day of June, 2018. Again, we have two of those, one being for Rossville for Ms. Doris White, and the second one being for Ms. Joyce Harrison for the Chickamauga Board. Item number three, consideration of Walker County Family Connections Contract. For many years now, the Walker County governing authority has been the fiscal agent for a grant to support the family connections. This grant is for $50,000, and we are the fiscal agent. This doesn't come out of the general funds of our budget. This is a hundred percent funding grant that comes through the state of Georgia. I'm not going to go through and read all of the details of the grant, but we will make this all available in the packet that will be put online on the website. We do have a contract to be signed here and also attested by a notary. Charlene Robertson here is tonight to notarize this. Is there any questions or concerns or comments about this fiscal agent agreement? Charlene will attest to that notary there. They always have places they love for you to have to initial. A lot of paperwork and get free money. Next item on the agenda, number four, is the Local Government Scrap Tire Abatement Reimbursement Program Agreement Addendum. This one is the scrap tire program that we had back last fall, correct?
Yes, November. In November.
Oh, back in November last year, so this is a modification because they've given us more money, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a modification to the existing agreement for Walker County 2017 Scrap Tire Abatement 18-ST-146-001 dated October 26, 2017, between Walker County, wherein after references the local government and the Environmental Protection Divis- Division of the Department of Natural Resources, an agency of the state of Georgia, hereafter referred to as EPD, whereas a local government EPD has previously entered into an agreement on October 26, 2017, providing for the local government scrap tire abatement project, whereas the original agreement provided for the cleanup of scrap tires in an estimated cost of $4,900, and whereas removal cost of the scrap tires collected has exceeded the original estimate amount, and whereas both parties desire to amend the original agreement amount in order to cover the additional cost of $5,769.51 to remove the scrap tires. Now therefore, it is mutually agreed that the agreement shall be modified in the following manner, change the agreement to state the following, EPD agrees to reimburse the local government up to $10,669.51 for cleanup project described in the above referenced project application. In witness thereof, the parties have hereunto a duplicate hereof like tenure in effect acting and through their duly authorized offices and agencies set to hand this date and year. So it has a place for EPD Director to sign this, and also a place for myself to sign this. So this just allows us to get more money from the state to cover all of the cost of that scrap tire project. Okay, I guess it's a table. We just have a duplicate here of that same document. Payne, you want to explain what they do with those tires after you haul them to?
Sure. They're, they go to a beneficial use recycler, and they're grounded, the metal is separated out of them that's recycled, and then the sidewalls and the rubber is ground up as industrial filler. It's also used for playground chips, binders and industrial processes, things like that. So they're totally recycled.
Okay, item number five was originally listed as a resolution, and then after our legal counsel reviewed this, it wasn't necessary for a resolution. We just needed to have public approval of a purchase order for Walker County Emergency Services equipment, since that purchase exceeds over $15,000. And so we have a purchase request for Walker County Emergency Services for $44,481.84, and Chief Hodges is here today to talk about how he's utilizing the money, where the money's coming from, and the benefit to the county of this grant.
So this is a Georgia Emergency Management sub-grant that came from the federal government, basically the federal government awarded the state of Georgia and Georgia Emergency Management, and a lot of amount of money for them to sub-grant out to counties and municipalities for the purpose of, to prevent terrorism and other catastrophic events and prepare Georgia for the threats and hazards that may pose the greatest risk to security. So last year, around July, we had submitted for what self-contained breathing apparatus, the air packs that you see the firefighters wear with the face piece that we utilize every day when we have hazardous materials calls or fires. We have about 160 SCBA's within the organization now, and again, that dollar amount is, is over a million dollars' worth of air packs. So as those, the air packs can last upwards of ten to fifteen years if they're, if they're maintained, if they're, you know, we keep the parts current. However, there's a lot of electronic parts these days on the air packs that, that have, that have heads-up displays where you, you have a, you have to have two types of alarming systems. One is, one that we have is a heads-up display that tells you how much air is left, so if you're in a fire, it gives, it's in the mask that they're looking out of, and then they have an audible alarm that goes off when the air goes down. Those are the components that deteriorate in the air packs and that we have to replace, and they're quite expensive. We originally put in last year for $136,270 for this grant, and we were awarded $46,000 from GMA. The funding, there's generally, a lot of times there's a match with grants that the county has to, has to do, in this particular grant, there's zero match, so we are, we're going to be paid back in full for the $44,481.84. That's coming, that's going to come back to the county after the purchase. So we were awarded the grant October 5th of last year. Commissioner Whitfield signed the agreement in November to proceed with it, and we have, as we discussed last year, we wanted to wait till adequate funding was available within the budget, that is, that is now there, and so we have put in for six SCBA's, twelve cylinders, which are the bottles that go in the back, that's one for each pack, and then a spare for each pack, face pieces, and then an audible device that hooks to the face piece that allows for clear communication between the incident commander and the firefighters that may be inside the structure. So that total again came to $44,481.84. We, we have to monitor, we've already been monitoring and managing this grant. We have to submit quarterly financials and, and progress reports to the state, and we've been doing, doing so. The reimbursement process will be, once, once we make this payment, we'll provide the documentation that that is cleared, and then the state will then send the county the full reimbursement for the, for the grant. So again, very happy to tell you that this is money coming in that we don't have to match or anything else with, so it's definitely supporting the emergency services of Walker County. Also want to make sure that I try to give credit where credit is due. Crystal Woods, who's the Administrative Assistant for Walker County Emergency Services, does most of the work on this, she prepares the information for my review and works hard on these grants. We've received several smaller grants this year that, that we're proud of, and she does a good job of that, and this is another, in another case where she's done a good job, and I didn't have to, I didn't have to, very, very little that I changed upon my review. So if there's any questions about it?
Any question, comments on this grant? Hearing that, I'll go ahead and sign this requisition request. And like all other grants, there's a lot of paperwork that goes with it. We didn't print all this off in your packet because we figured most of you are not going to read it, but it will be available online for anybody that wants to read the details of that grant and the requirements thereof in order to be in good standing. Okay, now item number six, consideration of proposal for civil engineering services from Paragon Consulting Group. We've mentioned this at a couple of our meetings about doing an assessment on all of the roads within Walker County, approximately 700 miles of roads, 2,300 segments that they will look at. Scope of work is they will inventory local roads and streets by collecting data and assessing several road characteristics for each, including roughness, service distress, service skid characteristics, and structure specifications of the status identified in Part A of the scope of service. Number two, use the pavement condition assessment to set priorities for project and select appropriation, appropriate treatments for repairs and maintenance as part of the planning effects. PCG will work with Walker County to combine payment conditions and data with economic analysis, and also a way to develop short and long-range plans for a variety of, our various budget levels. Step three, periodically evaluate the conditions of pavement, the rate at which pavement deterioration depends upon environment, traffic, load conditions, original construction quality, interim maintenance procedures. As part of the ongoing efforts in Walker County, PCG will provide periodic evaluations so the timely and effective maintenance can probably be extended to the life of the pavement. In this scope of work, they will provide this data, where we will load this into our GIS system, which talks about that in the agreement, where we will get an overall documentation and get pictures of all the road segments, giving an overall rating, documenting the severity and the distress of the appropriate maintenance and rehabilitation recommendations with that data. So they will give us, in summary, a recommendation and a grading of every road in the county, and will advise us and help us with obtaining grants to utilize against our T-Splash and our L-MIC funds to try to get matching fund by having this data. As we've spoken before, it's hard to get grant money unless you have good data. A lot of times, grant money is only a short window of time, and you're going to go to the head of the line and be more out to get a grant if you've got data and assessments of all your roads and have ranked those based off of severity, and also one thing that they look at very heavily and the state's graded on as a whole, is road safety, number of accidents on a road, those type of things, because the federal government has put an emphasis on trying to reduce the number of accidents on roads and the number of deaths. So the pavement condition assessment lump sum is $63,850, and the roadway culprit assessment is $18,500, which was something that I had them go back and add. There's approximately 350 culverts that they're going to assess. We've got some that we know that are dis-repaired, but we want to try to be proactive and rate those and rank them going forward as far as maintenance and repairs. Some of them, if a little bit of maintenance and structural integrity will keep us from having catastrophic failures with those. So we feel like it's a great value for what they're offering. If we can just get one additional mile of grant money for paving, all we need is one mile over the next five years. This investment will pay itself back a hundred percent. Mile number two is just over and above, that's the icing on the cake, so to speak, but we feel like that we are not spending this money, we are investing this money to put us in a position to be in line for state as well as federal grants for road improvement and road safety. Washington's talked a lot over the last few months about infrastructure funding for across the country for deteriorating of our infrastructure. We feel that this will put us in a strong position to possibly be the beneficiary of some of those federal dollars, putting us in a ready position. Is there any questions about this? Yes, sir.
Okay, are they going to be, of course, after some select?
That's not in-
Did you check the sub-track?
I mean- That's not in, this is original assessment, if we go back on some of the-
Because we've, we've got so many roads that, and if you, if you get out and ride on a motorcycle or a bicycle or walking, you'll see that it's, it's like sponge rugs. And historically, we have just paved over, well, that doesn't work.
Yeah.
Because you, you just waste your time. And are you aware to do an inventory, an assessment of culverts? If you're going to have to clean them before they can tell if they can?
I'm sure there'll be some of them will have to be cleaned and-
Normally, we'll have to clean them. I spent, what, seven years re-lining culverts for the state of Tennessee, and to determine if it's structurally sound, you will find that they'll have anywhere debris in the bottom, and it might cover as much as a quarter or a half of the, the covered, so you can't see it.
Yeah.
Now, the county probably has a sewer cleaning machine, that's all we need, clean them.
We do.
But they, they can't assess them if you can't see them.
Right. Good point.
So I, I just want to make sure you understand that, because otherwise, otherwise it's a wag while that gets, that you're not getting your money's worth as far as an assessment concern.
Yeah. Good point, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, there's some culverts on Center Road, right there, that stay full all the time, water cannot get through.
Yeah, they can be re-lined.
And this morning, I was out mowing, here comes eighteen wheeler, about forty-five miles in there, going west, here comes a pickup truck going east, he's doing about that, kind of curving the road, and I just seen that eighteen wheeler pan the back end off, over on his side of the road, and that curve, what curve is there? And it's just a disaster weight and a half. No rails, ain't nothing up there, I went, yeah.
That's one thing they're going to be looking at, is all the safety conditions of all the roads, what needs to be done as part of the assessment.
I don't know how many were recorded there, but they took out about eight or nine cross tires, had a tore up, I don't know how many, a tree ran through there. People going too fast in there, little rough conditions. Just bad. No Joneses over there, they come by, put that little tad of gravel in there, two months later, it's, it's gone, hold back again, full of water.
Yeah, we've got a lot of infrastructure we've got to work on, so now that the T-Splash funding's coming in, we can get the assessment and prioritize these and get a database, is what's going to help us a lot to be able to track the progress and be able to document and prove what we've done and how we've utilized those funds. All right. Okay, our number seven, Walker County Departmental Statistical Data. It's in your packet, I'll cover just a few of the highlights here this month. We had another real good month on adoption and rescue of our dogs. There were seventy-nine dogs that were placed or rescued. We had eighty-seven in the month of April. Code violations, they found thirty-eight inspections were not, or excuse me, were in compliance, thirty-eight were in compliance. There was ninety-two out of compliance for citation, warning citations were written. They were able to close forty-four cases of previous violations for code enforcement that were brought into compliance. And so when you look at the number that has been closed in 2017 being 480, and in 2018, year-to-date, 219, that's, I think, 799 cases that have been closed. So that's that many properties that have been cleaned up in Walker County in the last year and a half. The Fire Department responded to 469 911 calls for the Fire Department. Four hundred and six of those were responded by the quick response vehicles. One thing we're very proud of is the nights booked in Mountain Cove Farms, where we had people come and stay and visit, and stay overnight at Mountain Cove Farms in the month of April. We had fifty-eight nights booked, and in May, we had 181. Being told that that's a record month probably ever, and to put that in perspective, look on the report on the far right corner, in all of 2016, there was only 162 nights stayed for the whole year. So we had, one month, we had a, we exceeded what they did in all of 2016. So the staff there are doing a fantastic job, we're getting a lot of positive reviews on some of the booking rental sites that we are a part of, and getting a lot of repeat customers as well. Looking under our public relations, we had some very important topics in the month of May with our animal ordinance, and we had 247 new followers to our Facebook page. Joe was able to post forty-four new unique individual posts to Facebook for the month. We continue to get a lot of traffic on our website with 30,711 visits. And then newsletter subscribers, there's eighty-six new subscribers for the month, 541 for the year, and we get a lot of positive feedback. I think we're getting close to approaching probably a couple of thousand subscribers to that newsletter. We had another new one go out yesterday or today. So if you have not gotten on the email list, you can go to the county website. All you've got to do is input your email address, and usually the first week of each month, you get a newsletter that's about a five to seven minute read to give you an overview of all the positive things happening in the community that we have an awareness of. Another thing that we've been tracking and monitoring and we're going to be making significant progress on now that our T-Splash has passed and we've got some funding, but patching and pothole filling. We were able to accomplish 158 potholes in May and 294 in April, but you'll see come, really it's going to start maybe in July and August. We'll have a little bit in June, but we are getting our patch truck, all the service and maintenance brought up speed on it. We're going to have a dedicated person on that truck, three days a week, and you're going to see those numbers jump up into probably a thousand plus repairs on a monthly basis. Walker County Transit had a big month of commuting our citizens around with 1,978 trips versus April being 1,789 trips. So great report this month on the positive things that our team is doing and helping move Walker County forward. At this time, that adjourns our regular scheduled meeting. We will now open up the floor. If anyone has anything they would like to address this governing body for, we ask you that you would step up to the podium where you can be seen and we can get you on video, but if anyone has anything they would like to address at this time, please come forward.
Well, I'm Clyde Colwell, I've been working for White Cars back here for sixty-four years. But anyway, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here on the veterans. Walker County don't have no monuments, statues for the veterans. And, and reading I say that, well, here is a Purple Heart thing they had, and they put in on the book, I said, go down, donate money to that Purple Heart. Well, before it got down there, they had that thing paid off, I don't know what it cost. But, and reading I'm here, my dad was a veteran, had three brothers. And really, I'm here, my dad was a veteran, had three brothers, veteran. And I would like to see a statue put up for fallen heroes. And I'd like to see a panel put behind it with, with the veterans. Because most places don't have nothing for the veterans, all they got is, is heroes. And it's a lot of veterans who would like to see the name up there before they go on. And, 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 and I want it on a fallen heroes base, no tax money. But the county gonna have to get behind it at the, at the city center, is ideal place. They got a plan there to put one, something nice. And like a five-year project, something like that, say I want it overnight. And I'd like to see a veteran from Fort Worth, Chick Moggie, Rock, and LaFayette, you know, on a panel and some more volunteers, because it's gonna be a, you know, long draw that thing. And I'm not able to get on the computer, my wife's not able to get on the computer, because it's, I'd like to say, well, I got regular age, I'm eighty-eight years old. But, but I won't be around to see it. And that's what, I talked to Chick Moggie and I wouldn't have it small enough, this, this should be a Walker County thing, cover the whole, the whole county. And that's why I'm down here, because of that stuff. I go up into Kentucky, I, I was born in Kentucky. That's where most of the cities got a little monument for heroes, fallen heroes. And I don't know of one in Walker County that has a Purple Heart.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea and I'm surprised something's not come up like this prior and I think, I think something we need to get behind and make happen.
But, but, but I, I don't wanna be on committee, like I say, I'm getting to the point, I keep driving that time. I could be on like a kid, you know, sixteen-year-old boy, should be. But, but I, I'd like to see it happen over the start of at least my, my lifetime.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
We'll see if we make that happen. Mr. Caldwell, do you have any ideas of somebody who might be an ideal point person for a project like that?
No, sir. Well, Chick Moggie there, I've worked with her, Chick Moggie. So, I asked her, you know, to do something other, but it's, it's gotta be, it's a, it's a drawn-out thing, I'll be the county. And I think it's, they said get your own others involved, I, what he, who, his dad was a veteran. But somebody really knows and can get this thing rolling.
Yeah, we'll probably reach out and see who did the one here in Chutten and LaFayette and get their knowledge and experience and maybe some of their folks to be part of that committee. Colonel Brooks.
But I, I, I'd say, it's, I'm not good at speech, if you notice that, so this is the first time, you know, try to explain something other. But I go up to the, like, Simpner and Shadnugget. And I walk, you know, through him, stone brother, you know, this last time of the third, two bits of monkey. And one of them, I had on the wire, they had this guy's name, Sergeant Soso, you know. But on the other side, didn't have his name, right? And, and I looked at stuff, you know, and so it's, and, and, and go to, go to Rango, see the flags. But you don't have time to stop and see the names down there, or who the. And at one rate, I like the names put upon a stone and don't put them on a brick, or walk on, get them up where people see them.
Yeah, good point.
So, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, great idea, thank you for bringing that forward. Anybody else have anything they'd like to address tonight?
I'd like to, well, I can speak my pace. I'm like him, I have to come and get rid of it. Goddamn these, ain't as good as their original stuff. Okay, on a positive note, since we're no longer spraying the right of ways and my travels through the county going fishing and taking kids swimming and all, I've noticed that the wildflowers are really pretty this year. Now, I know a lot of people gripe because the shoulder is high, but wildflowers only get about two and a half feet tall. So, they're not, they don't obstruct your view, although they kinda mess your bumper up if you run your plastic bumper over in them. But they're beautiful this year. And I know you're doing some mowing, but in the section of the county I live in, you haven't got to us yet, so they'll, they'll, they'll be reseeding themselves and be there again next year. Now, we're not seeing any of the milkweed that the, that the butterflies like, but I, I think all the spraying killed all it. It's not a real hardy plant like all the other stuff is. Now, on, on another thing, when you ran, that you said we were gonna see periodic financial statements. I haven't seen one. I looked on the website, I don't see one. Now, I know some of the departments have come crying and moaning wanting more money. We saw the sheriff come in and made arrangements to get what he needed. But what about the other departments, are they, are they coming in? I see Chief Hodge in here, if he's got a problem, he comes in, but I haven't seen the other departments.
Yeah, all the changes that we've made to the budget, we've had here in public meetings and I think we've had maybe three or four amendments to the budget. One thing, I'm glad you mentioned that, the, the latest audit was finished up.
When, when you, when you ran, you said you were gonna have a periodic.
Let me, let me get there. The, the latest audit was put up last week, that was, that was finalized. And so, the twenty-seventeen fiscal year audit is put up there and it's about a hundred pages, so you can download it. On the new website, Joe has added audits all the way back to nineteen ninety-six, I believe it is. So, you can see every audit from ninety-six through.
Yeah, we can see the backdoor audits, but anyway.
Two thousand and seventeen. Once we get through June, then we're gonna publish on the website the year-to-date for the first six months of the year. And we're gonna start working on the budget for FY nineteen.
You probably already started working on it.
I think, we've said it with the departments, some have started working on it, but we've not brought them in and started working on it internally at the commissioner's office. We're gonna start that next month. And so, that information of midway here through twenty-eighteen will get released after June is closed out. And then, we will start having meetings with those departments for their FY two thousand and nineteen requests. So, we will probably have information hearings and that type of stuff probably along about September. Get all of that finalized for the tax commissioner to be able to get that out, have bills out by the first of October.
What about, what's the situation with the tans?
Uh, yeah, the tax anticipation notes, we've not had to do one this year yet. So, this year, we were probably four to five million dollars into a tan. So, we've not had to do any borrowing of any kind this year at all.
We've got, what, four months left in the year?
Yeah, but what we look at on a tan is on a calendar year as well, because those are due by December thirty-first. So, we will have to do a tan this year and we will probably be doing that within the next thirty, forty-five days to get us through the rest of the year. But we have made significant progress in our maintaining our twenty-eighteen budget, keeping our budget balanced. It hasn't been easy, there's been a lot of sacrifice by a lot of departments, there's been a lot of things that have been put on hold. But everybody's done a good drop, job of working together to keep us moving in the right direction to try to keep the county solvent and getting us out of this debt. And so, we will be having to do one, as I indicated, but it's probably gonna be, you know, fifty or sixty percent of what it has been.
I figure June, you're gonna have to do one sometime, or July.
Probably by July for sure, on our cash flow projections. So, we're in a much better shape once we continue to make our debt service payments.
What, what's the, anybody else need to speak? What, what's the status of these empty buildings that we, some that we're acquiring this week and some that we already have? What, what, what's going on, are we able to do anything with these buildings?
Empty buildings we're acquiring this week.
Well, the, the health, that health service, aren't they moving out of that office?
Probably healthcare, we won't have that building back until the end of the month and then we're gonna go in and assess the condition and what repairs and things. And we've got a couple of opportunities that we're looking at to utilize that facility for the community. And so, nothing's been finalized and once that will bring it to the, to the forum here. But they were, they still have possession of that building until end of this month.
Okay, well, I, I knew you had, what's that, Coats Building, were you trying to sell it?
Yes, and we, through the Development Authority, they had worked and had a couple of.
Nipples.
Opportunities and that's when we had the situation with.
Higher not.
The environmental issue that we had with EPA. So, we've been working in conjunction with EPA, trying to get that resolved and the documentation and get it all in compliance. So, we pulled back on that because we did not want to sell any property either through the county or Development Authority or anything that had known issues without getting it in the proper order and/or disclosing anything that has not been finalized or finished or still have an issue. So, hopefully, before the year's over, we will be able to sell the Coats of America building there in Rossville and get that under some redevelopment.
What's the status of the court building that's across the street from the commissioner's office now that you've got it propped up?
It's not good, it's, I would call it a big mess.
I've got a good idea of how good it's not.
You know, what we had to do, probably about thirty days, within the last thirty days.
All you did was keep it from falling down the street.
Yeah, the, the front entrance wall started leaning forward. So, the city notified us of that, we had to get with our structural engineer, because when they did the demolition, it created additional damage to that building. The structural engineer has advised us to continue to stay out of that business, or out of that building for daily business. And so, we had to go in there and per a designed plan by the structural engineer, go in there and build in two shoring walls and actually bulk the front of that building by drilling holes and putting rods in to that building to shore that wall up to keep it from falling out into the street.
They didn't recommend it to demolish the building?
No.
They probably shouldn't.
So, we are working with our neighbors, our insurance company and our neighbor's insurance company. So, to be continued and who knows how long that may drag out, but we have continued to do everything we can to keep it safe. And we have moved all of the offices out of there and we created this facility. So, we took lemons and made lemonade and created this to be able to use for, for court. And also, the offices that were displaced over there are also being moved to this building. So, hopefully, one day, we'll be able to go back and modernize that building and utilize it for the county.
That has a lot of termite and, and foundation damage, so don't be surprised if you can't do anything with it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then, it is six forty-five, appreciate y'all coming, look forward to seeing you at the next meeting on the twenty-eighth of June, y'all have a good evening.